And order, please rise for implication by Sean Usery, Crossroads Ministry.
Heavenly Father, God, we just thank you, Lord, for this group of people that you've put in place to represent the city, to make decisions for the city, Lord. I just pray that you will fill each and every person here with your wisdom to make the proper decisions that will glorify and honor you, God. And I just thank you for the city and what it represents for us and our lives and the place that we raise our children, God. And I just pray that everything done here tonight is for your glory and your honor and for the betterment of the city. In your name I pray, amen.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby?
Councilwoman McVeigh?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Tinsley?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilwoman Fox?
Here.
Mayor Potem Crocker?
Here.
And Mary DeGerris?
Here.
Do you have a call?
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I need to excuse myself from item GG.
Okay. Nothing else? Citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
My name's Jack Altman. I reside at 2404 West Maude Street here in Papa Bluff. I'd like to address the council on the intersection of West Maude Street and Highway PP. I have lived at that intersection for nearly four years now and have seen ten accidents happen in that time. Two of them being hit and runs, one of them being a fatality as we all know. When you turn onto westbound PP there, the speed limit goes to forty-five mile an hour immediately. When you crest the hill by southeast health, you've got blind traffic coming from West Maude Street there, turning into there from a dead stop. There's no warning that there's a blind intersection ahead. There's no warning of a hill or anything like that. It just seems like we could do something, a flashing light, reduction in speed, or something so that this don't happen in the future. The traffic that does turn west off of West Maude there onto PP Highway is from a dead stop. And as well we know, most all of our school buses turn there. So they're turning into a forty-five mile an hour speed zone there, and they can't see what's coming over that hill, nor can the traffic coming over that hill see them. I have not witnessed any, but I've seen a lot of close calls. You hear the screeching tires and the horn honking. Is there something that the city council can do to make sure this doesn't happen in the future? Some way we can rectify what the problem is growing that I see?
I'm sure there's something we could, it's state highways, so they would have the jurisdiction on the signs, but we could make a recommendation like, you know, cross-traffic ahead and maybe reduce the speed limit, talk with them and see if we can get something worked out, anything to, you know, help out the situation.
Anything's a start so that we don't have a reoccurring of, you know, status of what's been happening there.
Did you have any specific things in mind or just?
I would, personally, I mean, I would love to see a light there, a stoplight. I know that costs a lot of money and it may not be feasible right now, but could we make, you know, go in our decision to make, to head towards that, you know, in the future or something?
Again, with the state, and I don't know what their regulations are on how far between stoplights and things. We'd have to check into that and see if that's, you know, a possibility. But I think, you know, it'd be, I don't think it'd be too hard to get some signs up and check with them on the speed limit. Mr. Massingham, the city manager, the traffic control officer.
Because I noticed on some of the other state highways, 53 be example, when you turn onto that headed south, its speed limit's thirty-five for a long time before it goes to forty-five. But as soon as you turn on PP Highway, within one block, the speed limit says forty-five mile an hour. That's it. And most of them are exceeding that.
You know, we're getting a lot more traffic out there with Shelby Road and Eight Points and College and everything else, so.
I mean, the traffic's growing, so, you know, the city's planning for expansion. Let's see if maybe we can make that into our plans, too. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate it, man.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can you talk about anything?
Yes, ma'am. As long as it's not on the printed agenda. Okay. Just need your name and address, please.
My name is Mary Jo Hartruder, nineteen oh eight Saxon. I live on the south side of Papa Bluff. And if any of you guys ride on the south side of Papa Bluff, the town is going down. The streets are falling in. The ditches, the roads are falling in. The ditches down there is very, very hard for two cars to go back and forth. There's a lot of children down in there now because of rent-out houses. I own my house. But something needs to be done. The city is letting the streets fall in in Papa Bluff. That is, it's, I mean, I came back after thirty years and I am just like faber blasted about it. It's just horrible. So, I mean, you guys need to send people down there to look at it. I know you're building out north and the town's going out north and all this fancy stuff out there, but there is still people that lives in the south Papa Bluff that still got good homes that wants a good life still to raise their children, you know? And there is a lot of rental property that needs to be kept up, that's for sure. There's a lot that's run down down there. And it seems like nobody's doing anything about that except in the newspaper. But, I mean, you guys really need to look into those streets down on the south side. I walk my grandbaby every day down there, and I have to go down to a subdivision down in there because I'm scared to drive down the roads because there's no room. Like on Henry Street and all those, Thomas Street and all those streets down there. But, and then about, and then this little girl out here, I was in a car accident right there, Shelby Lane, right there, coming out by Harps. There was no stoplight there. My granddaughter was pregnant. And she had to go to the hospital, totaled my truck out because they were flying down PP Highway, went around a wrecker and just smashed right into me. Of course, it was going to be my fault because I pulled out. And I'm the one, my insurance is the one, had to take care of everything. But it, that, PP Highway has really gone crazy, the people driving down it. I mean, lucky my grandbaby and my great-grandbaby didn't die in that accident, you know? And it would have been, I mean, then you would have seen me a lot more, that's for sure, you know? But that's all I got to say. All right?
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. Carrie Hall, twenty-four eleven, Shannon, Papa Bluff. I, and several others, would like to know what our rights are for a silent protest against the, a lot of the community feels that Ben Russell should have been charged, just like the other gentleman. It is sad that a life was taken that day, agreed, and it's not going to bring her back. But a lot of us feel as a community that just because he is a upper standing person of the community, that that's exactly why he wasn't charged. What are our rights as into getting to start a protest? Because the community is very upset with this decision.
You know, Mr. Richardson?
Thank you for the question. And I don't know this is the right forum to really answer that question. You know, the city council, the city government, all of the members of the city council grieve with you for the loss of Heavenly. But the issues there that are concerning to the family and the loved ones are criminal in nature and they, the power to address that rests in the state judicial system, not in, unfortunately, not in the city government and in, within the city council. There is nothing that this city council can do or your city government can do to force or cause or influence or direct any type of criminal prosecution for what happened there. That rests with the state judicial system, the state's attorney, and down, down the street, two or three blocks. It doesn't rest with this city council. It doesn't rest with your county commission. It rests within the city, within the state judicial system. And even though we are sympathetic and we are concerned as neighbors and fellow members of our community about this situation, we can do things like the first gentleman asked. Can we look into, you know, better signaling, better traffic control? All of those things fall within of the city, you know, the city's prerogative along with the state highway department. PP is a state highway. Maude Street is a city property. And there may be some things we can do on Maude Street to alert folks. And there are certainly things we can do working with MoDOT to take a look at changes in speed limits or at least take a look at, you know, warning signs, signals and that kind of thing. Your rights as citizens in terms of a protest, you can collect petitions. There are many things you can do. I can't, I'm the city attorney. I can't advise you on, you know, how to prepare a petition or where to submit it to. All I can tell you is that there's not anything in this room or in this city hall that we can do that's going to change what happened that day or to bring anyone, unfortunately, to justice. And I know that's not a satisfactory answer. And I see many of our friends and neighbors out here that are supporting this and that have been supporting and helped raise money in Heavenly's name for scholarships and for, you know, family expenses and so forth. And we'll continue to do that. But as a government seated here in the city of Papa Bluff, there's really not anything that we can do legally to help you with your cause.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
What is our rights as far as setting up a protest?
Pardon me?
Need to come up to the podium, please.
You need to come to the podium.
No.
Can I go first?
Yes, ma'am.
She's wanting to know what the rights as for a protest, what our rights are. As far as I understand, as long as you don't, you can have a protest anywhere as long as you're not blocking an entrance or a exit. Am I correct on that?
That's absolutely correct. There are certain limitations, but if you want to have a protest, whether it be carrying signs or, you know, marching or whatever, within certain parameters that involve public safety, you can do that as you wish. You can write letters to your local newspaper. You can stand with signs as long as you don't endanger public safety or impede the normal vehicular traffic flow. There are many things you can do.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yes, if you'd just come up to the podium, please.
My name is Gina Davis, and I'm here in honor of Angela Pearson and all the work that she did to rail against this old boy system. I hope she rests in peace, but she had something good to say, and more people should have been listening. She was willing to fight for us. We need to organize and we need to get our stuff together. I don't think that he committed vehicular homicide, but I don't know what the proof is that the little girl was dead already. He should have stopped. Period. The, Mr. Barzer, the prosecuting attorney, he should have recused himself immediately. According to the DAR, he went around privately and spoke to other prosecuting attorneys and asked them if they would take the case. And when none of them would, he would be followed through. Now, I don't know how the judge did not know that they were related because I hear secrets all, all the time. And the court system, hell, they all play golf together.
Or drink before they hit them?
Or drink before they hit them. Thank you.
Miss?
We've got the same blood. No, it's our grandmother and your sister. You know, it's, the blood is out.
We're here, right. Right. We're here. All of us are related somehow, but that prosecuting attorney had no right to follow through. And if the judge had had a whiff of it, he should have stopped it. And-
Ma'am, ma'am, I, no, 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 no. We want to hear you. This council wants to hear you. But this is an opportunity for you to address this council. And you all can meet and you can convene anywhere, anytime you want. But this particular part of this very structured governmental process is for you to address these elected officials in your community. So please direct your questions here. And anyone that wants to come to the mic are certainly available to do that. But we, we can't get involved in a, in a big discussion or a debate among folks here. Your, your questions, your comments need to be directed to this elected body.
Well, as an elected body, I would hope that you would each, with the power and authority that you have as elected officials in this town, speak your minds, whether you believe that Barber was correct or not. I know this isn't a city issue, but you do have power within this city. And when you, I'm going back to the road where the little girl was killed. When you crest that hill forty-five miles an hour, you know, we need a stop sign. We need a speed limit. I understand that's a county road, but can't this council contact county? I mean, is this a catch twenty-two and nobody wants to be still?
It's a, it's a state road.
State. And are you all willing to do that?
Yes, I am. I sure am. We've already talked about that. I don't know if you were here yet.
I was not. I arrived-
We also, we also need your address, too, Ms. Davis.
Jack Altman. Yes. All right. So I will leave you, but I want to thank you for your time, and I hope that we will see your faces and hear your names.
Can we have your address, too, honey? Do you give that to them?
Yes.
You have to give it on the microphone.
Can I have piece paper?
No. Yes, it just has to go on the record.
For the record.
You have to talk in the microphone.
My address, my name is Gina Davis, twenty-seven twelve Highway fifty-one, Fisk, six-three-nine, four-oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let's get together. Let's make a Facebook page.
We have. Can we find out where?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Martin Reitz. I live on nine thirty-five Spring Street, Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Can you repeat your name? I'm sorry.
Martin Reitz.
And I'm Amy Hopkins, his wife.
And I live next to nine nineteen Spring Street, owned by Mr. Keith Wilcutt. Currently, there is a broken sewer pipe. It is owned, it is in the easement between the street and the sidewalk. So it's actually his problem to fix, according to the city. The issue is that it's been going on for several months. There was a, there was a problem on the property in the yard in February. That's been fixed. When that got fixed, it caused a problem down the line. So at that point, the city and Mr. Wilcutt also knew about the problem, and it's continued flowing sewage down the street. Up until last night, it was liquid, last night. Now there's solid material, as we speak, on the street. I have called everyone from Department of Natural Resources, the city, Mr. Wilcutt. Who else?
EPA, Health Department.
Code Enforcement, Building Inspector is right across the street. There's been a break in communication apparently because the Building Inspector, Mr. Chilton, just found out about it Thursday. So Thursday, he gave notice, and from that point, they have ten days to fix it. But it's already been an issue for two months. So about four-thirty, Superior Plumbing came and dropped off a backhoe. But there's still been no work done on it, and there's still feces on the street in front of my house, down the road, all the way to Eleventh Street, which is two blocks, two and a half blocks away from my residence. And there are, there are several issues that I'm aware of after talking to all these entities, the city, that I'm not the only one in Papa Bluff with this problem. There are other broken sewer lines that children are playing in, people are breathing the fumes in. This is a major health, health issue. The fumes alone can cause an upper respiratory infection, all right? You start breathing into the dust from this dried, contaminated dirt, it can cause E. coli, hepatitis. There's, it's, it goes on. The flies.
They land in it. We've seen birds take baths in it. I mean, our children, we have four girls, and all of them are sick right now with upper respiratory problems. I mean, it's just, it's unsanitary.
When did you first contact the city? Do you remember? Or what department you talked to?
It was in March.
It was in March. Whenever they fixed, whenever they fixed the problem in the yard of the property, it started leaking in the easement, and the city was aware of it then.
They fixed the property until April, though.
Okay. Because I know City Hall itself, the Planning Department, didn't find out till, I guess, last week. They contacted the plumber, came in, got a permit. Then they had to wait forty-eight hours to have all the markings made. And I know there's a backhoe out there, like you said, because I drove by there on the way to the council meeting.
The markings have been there for three, yeah.
Markings, well, I drove by there earlier today and I didn't see any markings, and then I saw some tonight. Maybe I wasn't looking for them earlier, but-
They're, they're spray painted all over the street.
Okay. I mean, I would, I would assume if you dropped the backhoe off tonight that they're going to get to it in the morning, so.
Well, absolutely.
I'm just saying that the Planning Department didn't find out till last week, and as soon as they did, they got on top of it. I'm not sure what department you talked to beforehand, but, you know, it sounds like there's a breakdown in communications, not notifying the Planning Department, and, okay.
So, you know, how can we address this breakdown in communication? Because like I said, after talking to all these entities, I'm not the only one with this, with this problem.
It would help me if I knew what department you talked to or who you talked to or-
Okay.
And when you talked to them.
Okay. Well, as of before today, today is really, you know, I missed work so that I could try to handle this. I, I honestly believe that if I hadn't missed work today, then there wouldn't be a backhoe sitting in my front yard right now waiting to dig tomorrow. So today alone, I've talked to Josh Wilkerson from the Department of Natural Resources.
I mean, city people, though. I can't control what, I just need to know what department you talked to with the city.
I talked to Code Enforcement Officer Sisk this morning, and he said that the Building Inspector Chilton was handling it. So I immediately came over across the hall and spoke with Mr. Chilton. He informed me that he just found out about it Thursday.
Right.
You know, so I know all this.
Okay.
I asked him about cleanup, because I want to make sure that it gets properly cleaned up, you know? If it doesn't get properly cleaned up, then fantastic, it's fixed, but problems are going to continue. So after I spoke with him, I went to the Water Department and spoke with Mr. Jamie Pierce.
And that was today?
Yes.
Okay.
Where you spoke with?
I, I spoke with Jamie Pierce last week as well, last Tuesday.
Okay.
So, so if you just found out about Thursday, I, so he, he definitely knew Tuesday at least because I spoke with him. He, he wasn't really sure about cleanup either. I kept getting a lot of unsure comments, like usually or, you know, what they'll probably do. I'm, I'm not really satisfied with that. I feel like there should be some sort of policy or regulation, either state or federal, that mandates how these things are supposed to be cleaned up. And nobody seems to know this policy or regulation. I keep getting words like usually or maybe, things like that. So after I spoke with him, he sent me to the Department of Health. I don't know if that was the right spot or not, but I spoke with somebody. That wasn't really their area, I guess. And then they gave me a number back to the Department of Natural Resources. So I did a huge circle, and after, after basically beating down Mr. Wilkerson's door, he did a little bit of digging, whether it's his job or not, and got, got a few answers for me.
Okay. Now, as far as cleanup, that's something I'll have to check into. I don't know that off the top of my head.
But I, I mean, one of my questions is, you know, I mean, what, what can the city do as far as, you know, holding these homeowners that are letting things like this go accountable?
Well, usually when, on things like that, when we're notified, it gets taken care of. I mean, there may be issues out there that they haven't talked to anybody here at City Hall. I don't know.
So how are, how are we as residents of the county supposed to handle the miscommunications within the city?
Well, that's something, that's something we need to take care of. I agree.
Absolutely. I agree.
But, you know, our, our neighbors have been contacting all these people too for the past months, you know? And it's just, I don't know where it's going. You know, I mean, if there's other properties, you know, when we found out what it was, we talked to some of the other neighbors, and one neighbor just thought he was smelling trash. You know, people walk up and down our street. They're stepping in it, carrying it, putting, it's getting on their shoes and going into their homes, you know, where their children, babies might be crawling on the floor they can pick up. I mean, it's-
There was a, there was, it was an accident, a block down on Mill and Spring Street the other night. A vehicle struck a telephone pole. So a lot of, a lot of officials came out, municipal utilities, police officers, ambulance. They all came out to assist with the accident. They were walking all around in it. They had no idea. One of the neighbors finally came down and said, "Do you know what that is?" And told them, and their faces wiped clean. The look was just, if you found out what you were standing in.
Especially, you know, ambulance, you know, if they're working with somebody that's injured, I mean, they could get staph infection along with other viruses from it carrying. I mean, that's-
Well, first of all, I mean, if we've got a breakdown in communication, it sounds like we need to get it corrected. You know, hopefully, your situation will be resolved tomorrow, and I'll keep an eye on it myself and the Building Inspectors.
Okay. And how about, so, so along with the other ones, because, I mean, this is not just about us. Like, like I said, like you said, it's getting fixed tomorrow, hopefully. We'll see. But there are, there are other areas around town that have similar issues.
Then they need to contact City Hall.
I've, I've heard about these other issues from city officials, city workers.
Okay. I mean, I haven't heard of them, so I'm just saying.
Right.
If they want to call me.
That there's a breakdown within-
That's what I said. If that's a problem, then we need to get it corrected.
Okay. So, all right. So what, I mean, is it, is there a plan of action on how to eliminate this?
I'll just have to get with the departments and we'll work something out.
Okay.
I mean, I can't come up with anything tonight. I'll need to talk to department heads.
Okay. Yeah, because there, there definitely is. Like I said, you didn't know about my issue. You don't know about the other issues, which, that, okay, I understand that, you know? Everybody's got a certain job to do. But there are some people that aren't doing their job because you're not aware of these other issues.
That's what it sounds like.
So, I mean, if, if it, if it takes a certain person to fix the problem and they can't fix it without knowing about it, then they might need to take the initiative to find out about these problems if their subordinates are not passing the word up the hill.
You're exactly right.
Okay.
Who was the very, when you noticed that this was the issue, who was the very first person that you went to? Was it your, your landlord?
The homeowner of the property.
Okay.
I contacted Keith in March.
Right. We've, we've tried to do the right thing, ma'am, and not overreact and call the EPA and have it set up, you know?
I was just curious as to how it got started when it very first did. So you went to the homeowner first?
Homeowner, Municipal Utilities came out. Obviously, we called them, you know, because-
The homeowner didn't want to take responsibility.
Right.
Said it wasn't coming from his property, even though it was seeping out the retainer wall from his property onto our property as well as the drainage pipe.
I'd like to suggest also, you might want to give the City Hall hours and phone number. And then we are representatives of all the people, so you can always contact any of your council members, either at large or in the ward that you're in. But all seven of us would work toward, you know, getting you to the right person, so you don't have to go two months without getting some response. You know, you might just try it from that direction. I mean, any of us would be willing to step in and connect you with the right people. We can't fix everything, but we can maybe get you to the right people a little sooner. And there's a really good website now that has all of our cell numbers, home numbers. You can always call City Hall. Any of these people make appointments to come see them and maybe get a little action, maybe sooner.
I'm, I'm learning. First, first time homeowner. You know, I'm young, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Talking about streets in Papa Bluff.
I have been gone for thirty years, and I moved back. The streets up, like going down Ninth Street and all those streets coming out tonight- and all those streets coming out to Ninth Streets, like Kenzer and Cynthia and all those streets, their stop signs are so far back, and if you go over that, to, you have to get to that point to see both ways. I mean, it's like from the nineteen seventy cars, you know how long the front ends were? They need to do something about that. There has been accidents there. Have you ever drove down Cynthia or Kenzer and then come out at Ninth Street right there, and how the stop sign's way up here, and, you know, you cannot see? You have to go past the stop sign to look both ways.
Well, I'd, I'd have...
That is something that needs to be looked into also.
I'd have to look and see for sure, but I think the stop sign is supposed to be placed before a sidewalk, so...
But not this one, not them streets.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at them and see, but...
Yeah. Then I wanna leave you guys with one thought. Has any of you ever hit a deer?
Yes.
Usually, you don't kill the deer, right? The deer's left, it dies on its own, or the next car behind it kills it?
Okay, we still have people.
No one else? Move on to workshop required items. Item A, City Council Review Bids Received for Soft Drink Beverage Bids for the Black River Coliseum.
Well, I just have really good ears, so probably not many others.
Did you say monkey?
Now everyone did.
Now everyone. Yeah, we, we received two bids for the, uh, beverage contract for the Coliseum, uh, one from Coca-Cola, one from, uh, Pepsi Mid-America. Uh, Pepsi's offering twenty-five thousand dollars, and Coke's offers fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, also in Pepsi's contract, they're asking for, uh, let's see, eight tickets per event, and that would actually add up, could, could add up to around two thousand dollars a year, which would bring them almost in line. But, if you have any questions on the contract itself, I think Mr. Godwin's here, he's been through the contract, and there's somebody here from Pepsi also.
I believe my question would be the difference in the prices of the product. How much product do we sell? And what kind of a difference does that? Let's see here, Coke is twenty-two ninety-six.
Well, Coke on average would be...
A case, and Pepsi's twenty.
Coke on average for the five years after the, there's, after the first two, is it, hey Bobby, is it the two or three years when it goes up?
Uh, two thousand ninety.
Can you come up here for a second, please? Sorry. Uh, Peter, I think the first two years, the, the prices are flat, and then there's a three percent increment in, every year after that. So, the math I did was, the Coke products was ten cents more a bottle, basically, than what Pepsi was. But, it looks like to me where you make that back up is in the water. Uh, the Coke price is twenty-three cents less than Pepsi, and the tea is actually sixty cents less than Pepsi. Is that about correct, Bobby?
Uh, that's, that's about correct, I would say. Uh, you know, these issues that you brought up with the tickets and all those, I'm sure those are negotiable, uh, but, I just wanted to be, make you all aware of that before and not after. Uh, and so, in case you had some questions, and I think there's representative Pepsi, I'm sure he'd love to talk. Uh, but, uh, you know, as I spoke in my memo, uh, we have been, I, I've only dealt with Coke since I've been there. We've had no issues. Uh, obviously, change is change, and we will have to address those, and we hope whoever we work with, we, we won't have any issues, 'cause we like no issues. Uh, but, uh, if you all have any questions, I don't know when the decision will be made, but I'd be, I'd be glad to go over with you, uh, and, uh, anything you might have, we can, you know, sure hash it out, and I'll get those questions answered through Pepsi or Coke.
Is the gentleman from Pepsi here, or representative?
You all had Coke for how much, for how long?
Uh, I believe Coke has been there now for ten years.
So, have you had any problems?
No, I haven't had any problems. Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, mm-hmm, thank you.
One of my concerns was Pepsi didn't pay until after the year passed.
That's gonna be my question.
Okay, I'll let him talk now.
My name is Tom O'Rose, I, I am employed with Pepsi Mid-America, we're a local company, as you know, building a new facility on Sixty-Seventh South, so, and I've been a, a part of the community for thirty years now, so... So, anyway, I'm here to answer any questions.
When I read the con...
Again, it's all negotiable, so...
When I read the contract, it wasn't specific on when Pepsi would pay.
We will pay within ninety days.
Of the contract signing?
Yes, yes.
And is that for the year, or is that for the full five years, or is it a stipend of a little bit?
We'll pay annually upfront, uh, every year. So, once the, the, the contract is, is signed, then I'll submit that we pay you for the first annual payment.
Okay.
So, then after that, it's paid automatically on the anniversary date of the signage of the agreement.
That's not the way I understood it in the material. I thought we had to wait a year to get paid.
No, no, we, we will pay you within X amount of days from after the agreement's signed, so, you'll get, first year, you'll get it within ninety days, at the most, so, and then, two thousand seventeen, July first, you'll receive the next annual payment.
Okay.
You don't have to wait a year. Now, it was mentioned on the pricing, uh, the soft drinks, our price versus Coke, you know, and it takes three or four years for us to eventually catch up with their price, and it was mentioned water evens that out. The, the total soft drink sales, the soft drinks are ninety percent of that, and I think Bobby will tell you that. The, the other ten percent, in, in, in being like that, would be your water and Gatorade, so, or Powerade. So, that's not a facility that's gonna sell, if five thousand people show up, the percentage, maybe ten percent water, twenty, but that's still not enough to say that Coke's value is better based off their soft drink price. Not, in my opinion. Now, the, the tickets, I did put that in the agreement, because Coke's agreement had it in there. They asked for ten. I thought, well, their agreement surely, you know, yeah, that wasn't extra, that's not something that we have to do. That doesn't have to be part of the agreement.
I didn't read, I didn't read that from the Coke side.
I didn't either.
It was in their ten-year agreement that expired, so...
And then how do you define an event? Because there's a lot of events that go there. Which ones do you pick? I think we need to define that if they would choose to go with your contract, because those events can go from a dollar to a hundred dollars.
Well, and again, that, that wasn't a part of the RFP, and, and again, like, uh, this is an agreement that's, if, if it's, if, if the tickets are a major sticking point, then we don't have to have those.
But, you see what I mean? I mean, it could be a vast difference in...
It would be any, any event hosted by, where Black River Coliseum controls the concessions, it would be your concerts and stuff like that. And what we do with those, uh, event tickets, we, we take, we have marketing events that actually market the Black River Coliseum. Uh, we do the same thing at the Show Me Center, so, we do, we use those. It's not just so Tom O'Rose can, can get in free. We use those for, you know, for, like I said, our local marketing events, with the groceries, and we giveaways, and, and stuff like that. So, it's, it's not that we want in free, it's, we use those, but it's not, again, it's not something that we have to do.
Is the equipment supplied by the vendor?
Yes.
And you would, all the equipment's comparable, there's...
Yeah, it's, we would supply the, like, equipment, you know, it's the vending machines from the coolers to so forth, so... Yeah, you know, equipment's, it's not an issue for us, 'cause, you know, it's just, that's part of our business. But, I would like for you to take in consideration, we are a local company with local employees. I've been to many of the events there at the Coliseum, and, you know, I've reviewed Coke's RFP, you know, what they proposed in ours, and I think ours is the much better deal.
Are you saying Coke is not local?
No.
Where do they come from?
Coke's office, they come from West Plains. They have one or two local employees. We have thirty or more, so... We have local facility.
We do appreciate your improvement out there, that's...
You bet. We're glad to do it.
Someone that's, runs the own, their only concession, like, maybe that's Black River, uh, can't think right now, Expo? Where do they, would you provide product for them?
We, we're not, uh, you know, all the little local events, the, uh, that happen there, that the Coliseum doesn't control the sessions, and, and a lot of those, uh, the Ag Expo.
Ag Expo, couldn't think of it.
You know, they get donations, and people bring in their own drinks that are bought from Walmart or Dollar General. We don't care about that. That's not a part of this. Now, would I go to, to the members of that organization and say, "Hey, can we work out a deal?", maybe? But, it's not, it's not where this agreement would require them that they have to purchase our products. Thank you.
Years passed, and I'm talking probably fifteen years ago, I served on the Coliseum board, and I don't have those facts in front of me, but I remember we did make a change, and it seems like we had difficulty getting our payment from Pepsi, and then there was a rate increase just right after we switched. That was prior than the ten-year contract that we're coming off of now.
And that's what we've put in place, and had in place since I've been with Pepsi, which has been eight years, is it's automatic payment. Your annual payment is paid on the anniversary date of the signage of the agreement.
I'm gonna reread that, 'cause I, that was one of my big concerns, and then I remembered what we went through about fifteen years ago, so I was just...
And again, this, this agreement, uh, Mr. Richardson, if it's something that needs to be changed, we're more than welcome to make any changes on this.
Were you in the position ten years ago, in there?
No, he's been there eight years, and I was on there fifteen years ago. You, you weren't the salesperson then?
No.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, and, and that's why we have procedures in place, you know, it prevents somebody from, from coming to make, making a deal with the city and not having, uh, authorization to do that, so...
And I too know, when I had a store, prior to that, I've had many hats I've worn, Pepsi outsold Coke, you know, two to one, I'd say.
That's correct.
Pepsi is a bigger seller in this area.
Well, when you, you look at all, all of our brands, Pepsi Mountain Dew, Dr. Pepper, Gatorade, you know, you, I always use the, uh, Walmart as an example. You go to Walmart, and they, they set their beverage space based on share, market share, you know? The volume that they sell of whatever particular company and brands, that's who gets the space. We have seventy-two feet of space. Our competition has like twenty-six, so...
So...
That's the power of our brand. You will sell more products selling our brand.
I just went back and reread this, and it says in here, it's my understanding that Pepsi will not make the yearly payment until the end of the year, as opposed to Coke front-end payment, so, we just...
I don't know where you received that information.
It's a memo from Mr. Godwin.
You're saying that's, you're saying you can change it. That's not gonna be the case.
'Cause I, I thought I'd read that.
That was just on the way with the con, the con?
That was one of the questions that I had, yeah, I didn't read it in specify in the contract.
Okay.
That was a question that I had.
But you're saying that, well, payment will be...
Yeah, payment one A automatically says that they'll make a five thousand dollar payment each year. It doesn't specify what date the payment's gonna be in, in the...
And that's what I remember, we had trouble getting our money.
If that date needs to be spelled out in the agreement, fine, you know, but I was, I was looking at, the RFP, you had ninety days to make your decision. You know, and that's all I based this off of. I couldn't, I couldn't come up with a date to put on, on the agreement, so... You know, it boils down to, it's a, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar value, you know, so, how we pay it, I think we've kind of talked about that, and we're willing to pay it upfront, that first payment.
I have another question for Mr. Godwin. Uh, what does your advisory board recommend?
Um, again, the advisory board is leaning on us, and, well, I'm not gonna make a suggestion, or didn't have enough to, to lean one way or the other. Like I said, we were, we were...
Have, have they met on this?
Yes, we have discussed it with them. Well, we didn't put it to a vote. I told them what I was planning to do as far as taking it towards the City Council that the bids were coming. Uh, the advisory board, it leaned on us, Greg and myself, to present it to you all. Uh, I'm not unhappy with where I'm at, but that doesn't mean that Pepsi doesn't come in, and, and we won't be happy. I can't speak for anything, any relation to them. I know they did have some issues, like you said.
I remember that very vividly, yeah.
For some reason, they changed at that point, but like I said, Tom wasn't there for you.
Right, right, and, and all defense, you were not, I mean, and that was many years ago.
And I used to compete against Pepsi. I managed the Dr. Pepper Company here in Papa Bluff for twenty-five years. So, I know everything about Pepsi from the outside and the inside. I can tell you this, that the Ashley Building, Pepsi was local. They gave that to TRC, they moved, everything was distributed from Sykesville, and then, so that was kinda in the beverage industry, that's what companies were doing. They were, okay, moving from a, from being a central or a part of the, you know, different towns and areas to distributing from way off. Well, we'd gotten away from that, that didn't work. We've come back to the local communities with a facility, Papa Bluff, we have a facility in Kennet, West Plains, you know, Sykesville. We've got a new facility in Cape, so we've gone back to the communities.
And I used to haul all night from Marion, Illinois.
We, we still do. The product comes from Marion, Illinois.
Cause it's bottled there, right?
Yes, that's correct, so...
These are just warehouses that are here.
That's right.
Yeah.
They made a lot of mistakes, but when you sell the volume that we do, when, when you sell what we deal with, and then we're a big part of people's business, so if they run out of a Mountain Dew, it's a bigger problem than somebody that might run out of a Sprite, you know, so, and there was some issues back then, but I will tell you, we don't have those now. There's gonna be hiccups from time to time, but that's why they have people hired like me, so...
And, and to convey to you all, it doesn't, it, it won't affect us, we will get along with whoever it is, and we'll be cordial, and I'll keep you all abreast of any issues that we have. I speak to Pam regularly on any issues that we have, so that she hears them from me first and not through Greg.
When does the contract actually renew? Do we have a date of when Coke's ends?
We are shooting for, at this point, July first would probably be it for us. Now, the contract has run out. We had, uh, we had had a proposal when, when Pepsi came to us and said, "Hey, we'd like to bid that." That was, it was January one, I believe, is when the other contract ran out. They said we'd like, uh, to bid on that. So, we've been in the process of, of getting that done, right? So, right now, we're not under contract, Pepsi's, or Coke's contract has run out, and, uh, we still have product in the building that we would alleviate, you know, the quickest way we could, once, once Pepsi comes in. And I'm sure that they would give us time to get that out of there. I understand it's a very competitive Coke and Pepsi, or like the Hatfields and McCoys. I understand that. That's on name and not on nuts.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna get along with whoever it is. Uh, I'm sure Greg will have a million questions. He'll get tired of hearing from Greg and myself for a couple of months, but we'll get by that. Either way, that you all decide in whatever it is, uh, but, uh, I'm not here to say, oh, this is the guarantee, or that's the guarantee, because I don't know. If, if we do decide to go with Pepsi, then we'll find out. I know more in a year than I know now, so, but I appreciate you.
I don't remember this ever coming before the council before. I thought it was a decision that was made within the, uh, I didn't think so.
You have any questions or comments?
I, my personal feelings, we got a representative here that's got a, that's building a local facility, and I don't see a representative from Coke, I'm sorry, and he is actually cheaper, and I, I don't see how we can make any other decisions.
Well, it's a workshop item, so we can still research over the course of the next two weeks, anyway. I would entertain a motion moving, um, item A to the voting session.
I'd say that.
To be held June twentieth.
I'd say. Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Coke?
Motion carries. Item B, the City Council Review Engineering Qualifications Received for the Completion of a Hydraulic Study of Pike Creek from Missouri State Highway PB to State Highway Fifty-three, to be funded by a grant from the Missouri Community Development Block Grant Program.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as most of you are aware, we have, do have flooding problems on Pike Creek, and it's been an issue for years. Uh, Mr. Avery was able to apply for a grant through, uh, CDBG. And it's been an issue for years. Uh, Mr. Avery was able to apply for a grant through, uh, CDBG. And we had to have qualifications for engineers. We had four different firms, all reputable firms. Uh, myself, Dennis, and, uh, one of our building inspectors rated all the companies. And, uh, the company that came in on top was Smith &amp; Company. I think one reason I rated them a little bit higher, because they're working on Shelby Road right now, and kinda goes hand in hand with, 'cause it runs along Pike Creek. I just thought they'd be able to, they've probably already done some of that work. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
One question I had when I looked at this, this was the, the data that you guys surveyed these companies, was it the exact same data used by all three?
Yes.
Because then it kinda got weird for me. Uh, Dennis, are you, are you here for? One thing that confused me was the second one, the capacity and capability of the firms performing the work in twenty-four hours. Dennis, you gave civil engineering an eighteen, and Mark, you gave them an eight. What was the difference between the two that made you two think so much differently about the data?
I have some background in working with, uh, is it CEA? Was that who you're speaking with?
I believe it was the fourth one.
Okay. Uh, I have some background in working with them. They do have a satellite office here in town. So we've had, I've had projects worked through them before. So I was, I had familiarity with them.
Well, Mark gave them an A. What was that for?
I mean, you know, you go through and write them, and you go through the material, and you come up with a number, and I don't have any specific reason, but you know...
They might not have had any background or knowledge of the firms.
None of the three ever sat down together and did this. I mean, it was, everybody did it separately, so...
That's kind of a question. I mean, it's a big project. And it's something that we're getting ready to, to give to a, an engineering firm with a lot of money. And it just seems like to me, no offense to anybody on this sheet, but it just seems to be very arbitrary on how we came up with the numbers. Not necessarily anything, any, anything that was even remotely, if I hate to use this term, scientific, in coming up with who we were gonna use.
I used to do a lot of these ratings by myself. And probably about five years ago, I told them, I said, I really don't want the pressure of being the only one rating when these submittals come through. I've done a lot of them over the years. A lot of them with drainage and flood buyouts and, and different things like that. So I, I know these firms, and when they submit a statement of qualifications, I will go through and look at it and see what their background is, and see what their specialties are. So, you know, uh...
So previous, previously, you would do this by yourself, then?
I have, and, and I have in years past, which I, I wasn't really comfortable doing that, so...
Right. Well, based on that, the first option that we have is still the same. I mean, you rated higher, um...
I believe so, yes.
On Smith &amp; Company than you did on any of the others, by fourteen, so...
Well, it's a little bit like writing in, when you're interviewing employee, for an employee, it's, you might have four or five people rating, and sometimes those numbers will be all over the board 'cause they look at something different or see something different. It's, you know, some of it's just personal observation or personal opinion.
That's why it is good to have multiple people rating them down and all that, so... But I hope I could answer, answered part of your question, Philip, maybe...
You did, but I'm kind of in disagreement. To me, it would've been better if you three would've got together and would've talked about it, and then come to council and said, this is what we come up with. Instead of three different surveys here that, you know, I'm not sure what these numbers mean to them now, because they're all over the board. And, like I said, no offense to any engineering firm that's on these sheets, it's just to me, the way the numbers came out, it looks like Smith &amp; Company did, but like, you gave them a one-fifteen, Mark only gave them a one-on-one. What's the big difference there? What's the variance between the two?
I don't think there's any correct answer to that.
I think we go back to the questions that, that were on the rating sheet, which we didn't generate that ourselves. We got that directly from Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission, who's administering. So we were looking at the same questions, but our backgrounds may be different. You know, Mark, Mark's background's in finance and in management, and my background's in, in dealing with plans and reviewing things. And then my billing inspector, obviously his is in plans and projects, so...
That's why I think a collaboration would've been better than, than three.
I would disagree with that, though. I think it'd be an individual, 'cause they could sell, you know, they could, one could out-talk the other one and sell them on it, where individually, they're making up their own mind on it. And Dennis, I would respect Dennis's opinion, because he has had so much experience with flood buyout, where a finance guy hasn't. But yet he has, he knows about the lawsuits or the finances or how reputable they are from that side of it. So to me, you bring different expertise to the venue, but if you're all in one room doing it, you could convince the other one, kinda like we do in a meeting.
And I think that's what we kinda thought, when everybody gets together.
Use, one person may sway another, you know, which is not always bad. But then again, it's not an exact science, like you said. You know, it's subject, it's subject to the information you have and the knowledge you have when you're reading that question. What does that question mean to you, so...
I mean, I see where you're coming from, as far as how some of them do have such a wide variance based on others. But I mean, if you really look at each one, if we just said, you know, based on Dennis, or based on Kelly, or based on Mark, this is who we choose, all three of them had the highest vote for Smith &amp; Company.
Well, like, you know, and I think that is a collaboration. You know, you got three different people looking at it and scoring it, and then we're totaling up the number, and...
All in different areas.
Which everyone comes out with the highest, it's just the highest, and the one that they, all three have picked together as the...
And when they start out doing those individual numbers, and they did not create the questions, they're building a base of what their number's gonna turn into. They're not openly picking, giving one firm a number, 'cause it, it's kind of flip flops back and forth on how they ask the questions.
It just looked weird to me.
I agree, it does look weird. I mean, I actually put them on a spreadsheet, and I thought, you know, I kinda rate them. I'm kinda fall within one certain number range, and Dennis did his.
Right, it's all over the board. You got one way up here, they're all at the same company, but you got one way up here, one down here.
Well, that's like, you know, on competitions that I judge, you know, for high schoolers. My first, first year I judged was last year, and I gave them all, like, their high score was eighty, and the person next to me was in the hundreds, in one-fifties and two-hundreds, and I thought, oh, gosh, man. You know, and they said, you know, that's just how you score, you know, it doesn't make it better or worse. And next year, I'll know that...
It's supposed to be more of a fair system by doing it like that.
Right. So I mean, like you said, your numbers, you know, you might target more towards the teens, whereas you might target more, you know, towards the twenties, so, I mean, I get that.
Well, it's like when I used to interview for employees, I keep going back to that. I would never give anybody an excellent, 'cause I'm sure everybody's always got room for improvement. Although on question number six, I think I gave them all a twenty, because that was information that they had to provide, and they did provide it, so...
No room for improvement there.
You did do that with a twenty on everybody.
And you didn't.
One of them gave a real low score for the compliance. I don't see how they can be.
Yeah, that's my point.
I mean, you have to do that to...
Again, it's just an advisory to bring to us, and then we have to make the decision. So they're just doing the legwork behind the scenes, and then we have to rely on their knowledge and expertise and their advice to make our next decision.
With that said, I'd entertain a motion to second, move this to the voting session, June twentieth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the City Council Review Bids Received for the Sale of Street Department's nineteen-seventy-four Auto Car.
Yes, we received, uh, two bids on that. One was actually quite a bit higher, and the other than a $4,000 bid, and we're just recommending that you approve that bid. It's a piece of equipment that's no longer needed by the city, and it's, like I says, nineteen-seventy-four, so it's old.
No questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion, move that to the voting session to be held tonight.
So moved.
Second?
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Item D, City Council Review Bids Received for the PB Paving Project, STP dash five one zero 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 one, related to South Eleventh and Thomas Streets.
Yes, these are bids for the two paving projects. Apex came in as the low bid. Since it's a state project through STP funding, we're required to award the bid to the lowest bidder. And, uh, Mr. Nesbit is here from the engineering company. If anybody's got any questions about the bids or the process, or for me.
I guess I, I was messing with numbers this afternoon. I don't guess I understand if we're using the same material for both Eleventh and Thomas, how one company's unit price can go up by seven dollars and another company only by two.
But one company stay flat, like...
Right.
How does that happen?
I'm not sure, it's...
I just thought, I mean, with the seven-dollar increase, that was actually the bid that, um, was the cheapest, but I was just curious on that.
Okay, now, you're, you're talking about the unit price?
Right.
Yeah, fifty-seven dollars in the case of Thomas, and then it's sixty-one fifty.
Right.
Uh, that is, uh, depends upon the bidder. Uh, I, I see this all the time.
Okay.
Uh, where they'll bid one section, um, less than they will another. Honestly, I would've bid Eleventh Street more if it'd been me than I would Thomas, because there's a lot more busyness in with Eleventh Street, although it is a bigger area, so... Uh, that could, that could be one reason. But there's, there's no real rhyme or reason to this. It's, uh, this is what the bidders decided in their infinite wisdom to try to get the bid.
I totally understand that, but now we're, when you're saying that, the two bids between yourself and Robertson are so close. How do I know that you're gonna come in at fifty-seven dollars a unit for that?
Mr. Nesbit's the engineer.
I'm not, I'm not bidding. I, I'm not...
He's with the engineering company.
Okay, well...
But once they get the bid, they have to supply it.
Yeah, that's correct, absolutely.
They have to go with that. They can't change the price after they get it.
That's right.
This is a firm fixed price for, per, per ton.
This actually came in quite a bit under what we'd estimated, didn't it?
That's what I was gonna say, yeah.
That is...
Unless they come back with a change.
I mean, this is part of, partly my ignorance, is not knowing much about construction and, and just trying to learn it. When I was looking at this, I was saying, well, it's the same thing. Why wouldn't you bid fifty-seven dollars for all of it? Instead of fifty-seven for one piece and sixty-four, sixty-one fifty for another? If it's the same material, the streets right next to each other, are you drop shipping it? I don't know.
I mean, they're, they're trying...
They're just setting the price.
Yeah, they're, they're putting, they're putting a, a price on it to try to get the lowest bid. Now, how they want to do that, I mean, they can, they could put zero on, uh, Eleventh Street and a thousand on, uh, Thomas. I mean, it doesn't make a big difference, just as long as it's a, a total, total amount is, is less.
I understand that, but getting back to like what Peter said, it's so close. And Robertson's local, and they lost out because of this situation here.
But we have no control over that.
I understand that, Susan, but what I'm trying to say is...
The state makes you go.
The state, yeah. This is a state, you can't, there, there is no, uh, local preference given.
I understand all that, sir.
If it was a street we were paying for or something, we could, we could give a local advantage or whatever.
I'm just saying, it's just, it's just hard from a math standpoint for me to, to visualize it. Why one's fifty-seven and one's sixty, one's fifty, and it's the same project?
I guess in light of that, I'd ask why we're, why we have to vote on it if the state mandates it.
Documentation for the record. Documentation for the record to get the money.
Well, I'm looking at, and I may be completely wrong.
This is how we get the money?
We have no, we have no other choice.
On Eleventh Street, you got two thousand one hundred and something units, and on Thomas Streets, you're down to eight hundred and something. So I'm saying they're giving the, the better price for the more units.
Right.
And if all that, you know, would've been, they split up the Eleventh Street to two different things, I guess. You know, in case one of them failed, which one we could, you know, if we didn't have money to do both of them, then we could choose the one or...
That, that would be a possibility. I mean, they might've, I, I doubt that they thought of that. I think they were probably just trying to get, uh, a, the best price they could possibly get, uh, in total.
I mean, really, they could've added it all, like you said, all, all together, and said, instead of twenty-one hundred and eight, done three thousand and said, this is the unit we're gonna do for them, so...
And Apex does get a lot of the area-town contracts. I mean, they just know what they can live with, and that would be their business, their financial dealings, not ours. But if you'll watch, they'll get a lot of the, the low bids for the state contracts like this.
Well, now, Apex, in a sense, has an advantage, because they're owned by Delta, who is supplying all the asphalt. So, uh, Delta's got a real advantage. They would, uh, well, they can have an advantage. I mean, it's not, I, actually, I've had several paving projects, and this is the first one that Apex has been the low bidder for me.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. But, uh, I mean, I've had, I've worked with Pace, Asa, and I, Robertson Bridge and Grading. I have not done an asphalt project with them, but I've done other projects with them. But, uh, I would say anytime that Apex wanted to, uh, they probably would have a, a better advantage than anybody else, because the asphalt comes from, uh, Delta companies, which, I mean, those are two separate companies, but I mean, they're, you know, I'm sure...
But that's how they can maybe cut some of their overhead then, or live at the price that they're bidding.
I mean, I, I'm not gonna accuse them of any type of collusion, I won't say that. But I'm just saying that they can, you know, they, they just have a, an advantage there from the standpoint that they're in the same, same group of companies.
I see what you mean.
And, and there's nothing illegal about that, you know, not whatsoever, just that, you know, it's just the way that these companies are structured.
I think the public will be very excited that we get started with someone on Thomas Street and Eleventh Street. I hear more about Eleventh Street than any, but I think that's good.
This will be a relatively complex, uh, project from a state, uh, paving standpoint, because of all of the, uh, manholes that we're gonna have to raise and that sort of thing. There's gonna be a lot of busyness out there on Eleventh Street. What I did, as far as the job special provisions for this project, I mandated that the contractor, which is Apex, uh, once they're approved, and the city and AT&amp;T, we all have a meeting, uh, before we start the paving. And, uh, we will set a date for the paving, and then work backwards, so that the city and AT&amp;T have time to raise the manholes, and the city has time to grade it. And, uh, then, 'cause, 'cause what I don't want to happen, and I mean, I can't promise that it won't, but I don't want it to happen, is that we, uh, start working on this, the city, and everybody gets the manholes raised and that sort of thing. And then, uh, two months later, somebody comes in and paves it. That's gonna be a disaster. So we've got to have a drop-dead date from the contractor, so that whenever we get everything prepared for them, and this means that the, the city, the, uh, and AT&amp;T are gonna have to work with me and, and with the contractor to get everything prepared. And the minute that they got it prepared, then we want the contractor to swoop right in there and get it done. Now, Thomas, it's not much of a problem. I mean, there really is not, there's not the busyness on Thomas that we have with Eleventh Street. But with Eleventh Street, we, we need to have very good coordination between the contractor and the city and AT&amp;T.
I'd make a motion, we move item D to the voting session, June twentieth.
Tonight.
Tonight?
Tonight, yes.
Good.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the City Council Review Policy from Cape Porter Fund, relative to the Police and Fire Department.
Yes, as most of you know, back in, I guess, two thousand four, Cape Porter donated a million dollars to the police department and a million dollars to the fire department for what we call a, uh, Fire Injury Fund or Police Injury Fund. What she wanted that money to be used for was in case there was the death of a firefighter on duty or a police officer on duty, to help that family out with maybe college expense for the family, or to help the widow out, or the widower out financially. There's never been a policy in place. We've never had a claim on that until recently. Uh, we had a, uh, employee that actually went out on disability. And this item has come up, and there's never been any rules and regulations about it on paper. Uh, what I'm suggesting is this committee, a committee be formed using the Police and Fire Pension Board. And that's made up of firefighters, police officers. And they would determine, you know, how that's set up. We would, uh, review that with them in the next couple of weeks, and, uh, put some guidelines and give you all, give to you all for your approval.
I did see that we were given, um, based on what the Missouri State Highway Patrol uses, the Masters Program, I believe. And the only thing after reading it that I think maybe we should include in ours would just be that, as far as the educational benefits go, it didn't really specify, it just said for those to be in good standing. And I'd kinda like to see somewhat kind of like a scholarship does... And I'd kinda like to see somewhat kind of like a scholarship does, that, you know, you must be at full time maybe to receive that three thousand dollars, or if you fall below that, then maybe you only receive half the stipend or maybe none. I don't know how that would work. And then, good standing, you know, some schools, that's, you know, your GPA of two point oh. I don't know if maybe instead of just saying good standing, if we would set a GPA for that. It's maybe two point, two point five, which is average for someone. So those were just two ideas that I had as far as the educational benefits went, just to have some sort of guidelines. Because I feel like, not that anyone would do it on purpose, of course, but, you know, if you sign up for nine classes and, or six classes or what, you know, and we give the three thousand and then by the end of the semester that it's paid and you only have two left, then really you're pocketing, you know, what should have went to that college or facility. So that was just two recommendations that I had for it. But everything else in the master's program, I thought, was nice and something that we should follow, so.
I think that's excellent suggestions because I think it's good business too to define it so there's no gray area as to what each side's expectations are. My question is, do you think we really need a committee, though? Is it not something that we can't, Mark can tweak this some and then we can make a decision as a council?
Well, but it is for the firefighters and the police. Don't you think they should have some input? I mean, I think.
I think they could have input to the council just as well as they could seven more people.
Well, we had talked about a separate committee and then I came up with the idea of police and fire pension board because it's already a standing committee and, you know, they deal with their pension all the time. I mean, that'd be up to you all. Or they could make a recommendation, bring it to council.
They could make a recommendation. I mean, their input's not what I'm opposed to. It's just, we make so many committees, it delays the process. It takes so long. I feel like we have a good foundation and, you know, we're still open. They can talk to any of us or come to the meetings or, I just question why we need another committee.
Well, the police-fire pension board's already in place and they can just.
Just make that as their duty?
Try to tweak it with some that the mayor sets on that board.
I was, I guess I was hearing that that was gonna be a part of the committee, not the only. Okay, but if you're just giving it to them, now I understand. I was just thinking you're gonna have a representative to be a part of the newly formed.
No, I was just recommending that the police-fire pension board be the committee and make those decisions.
So would it be similar to other boards in the city, so where they would, they wouldn't come to us for anything then? They would be solely the ones that would decide who was eligible for those funds?
They'd have, no, they have to come through here.
They'll still come through us.
Through Mark with an ordinance.
Right, right, okay.
They've just set up the guidelines like in the memorial fund.
They just would be the legwork to get it defined and then present it to the council. We would still have the opportunity to tweak it again if we wanted to.
Right. Well, the only reason I question is because you had said you just thought it should stay with us. But, I mean, essentially, it kind of still is.
Because it is city fund.
Right, right. Okay, that's, that was my only question.
And I was thinking it was gonna be a new committee. I didn't understand that it was going to an existing committee.
Right.
I thought they were gonna be a representative, a part of the new committee, so I just misunderstood that.
And there's nothing magic in my memorandum.
Right.
The master's plan that is set up by the Missouri State Highway Patrol is a starting point, not an ending point. And it is a very highly respected plan and program, not only in Missouri, but all over the United States. It's one that has been adopted in many, many other states as a model. And the reason that it seems to have worked for them is because each individual case is different. In one case, you may have a death with a widow, no dependent children. They need a funeral bill paid. They need this or that as a transitional thing until other types of aids kick in. As Mark and I met with Jay Decker, and unfortunately, these gifts were from Kay's trust when she died, after she died. And the trust itself gave us very little guidance as to what was really on Kay's mind. And so by gleaning from Karen Miller and Jay Decker, who were not only her attorney and her CPA, but are very close, dear, personal friends, we were able to try to reconstruct exactly what it was that Kay was hoping for us to do with these funds. And that's why we, based on that, you know, Kay said, I want this to be an endowment. I don't want this to just be spent out and gone in ten years or twenty years. I wanna help the firefighters. I wanna help the police officers. And I wanna help their widows, their dependents. And I wanna help them if they fall somehow through the cracks, you know, with other types of things that statutorily they're entitled to, like workers' comp, temporary, total disability, those kind of things. Other benefits that they receive through disability retirement, through their own system. So this is meant to supplement it. It's meant to be very flexible and very prompt. You know, if firefighter dies and is left with a widow who has to try to negotiate with a funeral home to get her husband or his wife buried, this pension board would be able to move pretty quickly and be able to look at things typically. But ultimately, what would happen, this, these two funds would maintain at a million dollars, to the extent that they earned income over and above that, which they do, then Kay wanted that money spent for things that would enhance officer safety, firefighter safety. And in fact, the reason, if you look at that, that one of those funds is down a little bit, is because in two thousand seven, I believe it was, we had a merchant situation where we had a ladder truck go down. We couldn't serve the high rise. We couldn't do a lot of things. And so in consult, at that time, this was before Mark, before me, before you all, except, maybe Susan was here, they said, this is the kind of thing that Kay Porter would want. And so there was a substantial amount of money used out of that firefighter's fund to buy that hook and ladder truck.
Which is for safety, which is what her intent was.
Right. So what we're proposing here, subject to obviously your approval, is that we gain the best of both worlds in terms of what we gleaned was on Kay Porter's mind. And that is that we establish the fund, long-term endowed fund. We will use the excess earnings for things that the police department, the fire department can justify to city manager and to you during the budget process. We're gonna buy bulletproof vests. We're going to buy this or that. But when that fund drops down to a million, it's frozen. No more buying equipment, no more buying, no matter how important it is, safety equipment. You go get that out of your general fund, okay? Then if we have a claim, which has obviously been rare, this has been here for fourteen years, and up until a few months ago, we had no, not a single claim. If there is a claim and it's for tuition for a dependent, if it's for a bearer of policy, it's for helping the widow get back on her feet, you know, on a temporary basis, then that fund can drop down below a million. But then it can't be touched through your budgetary processes until it grows back to a million dollars. And, but after long conversations that we've all had with Jay Decker and with Karen Miller, we believe that what we're presenting to you as a general format is exactly what Kay would have wanted.
Within, inside of that contract, would you define not only the GPA, but is there a number of dependents that would be eligible if the funds were available? Is there a length of time they could draw it, like through a master's program or if it's just through the basic of college?
I think the beauty of the master's program is that it's handled strictly on an individual basis. And then you raised some very good, or, excuse me, Councilwoman Fox raised some very good points. You know, how many hours they gotta carry? Is the GPA gotta be a two point five or a one point eight or what? You know, I think by giving it to a board, an existing long-term board that includes firefighters, includes police officers, includes the city manager, includes the city clerk, I think there's representative from the council on it, they can look at that on an individual basis. And, you know, and if Deb dies in a horrific accident and he's got a senior girl or boy who wants to go to school in the fall, we'll pay your tuition. Now come back and show us how you did. I mean, so it's an ongoing thing. It's not like, I don't think this pension board, and it's always subject to ultimate approval as to what this board does, but they're more flexible. And they can take a look at it and spend more time taking a look at it than you guys would be able to do with all the other things you have going on. If they come to you and say, hey, you know, this kid wants to go to Three Rivers or this kid wants to go to Southeast Missouri State or whatever, we're gonna pay their tuition this fall. And then we're gonna ask them to come back and show us how they did. And we may come back in January and say, let's pay their tuition again. Or, you know, if they join a sorority or fraternity and bomb out, have to be a bus, you know, sorry, we're not gonna pay for another semester if you're making one point five. Or dropping from fifteen hours down to four hours or whatever.
It'd be kinda like applying for any scholarship and then the board would take it under advisement and then forward it on to us. I think that's great.
That's the way, hopefully, the more, you know, it's gonna be a challenge to draft these policies. And that's why the master's was a starting point. And even with the master's, when you look at that, it's a fairly elaborate plan. Ultimately, the success of that master's program is that they do have the flexibility to take a look on a case-by-case basis. What one family might need, another family might need, could be totally different things.
Which I think by giving it to that pension board, you know, with firefighters and police officers serving on that, they know that family more personal than maybe even we do. So, you know, to be, right, to be able to know the basis of what each family needs, they're gonna know more, more so.
I agree wholeheartedly. I'm glad that we talked about it.
Yeah, that's exactly what city manager was talking about, councilwoman, was that you got colleagues. And they know those families. They know those widows or widowers. They know those children. And then you've got the power of veto. In all likelihood, they come to you and say, this is our recommendation. You're probably gonna say, who are we to second guess? Because you're dealing with families that are making those decisions, making those recommendations to you to make those decisions.
Just for my clarity, you know, we've been talking about this being just a death situation. What happens if a firefighter falls off a truck, breaks his back and can't walk anymore?
That would be included as well in our proposal. And actually, Kay wanted that to be done. I think what Kay, what Mrs. Porter, it was not necessarily envisioning is that because of workers' compensation, because of disability benefits that are paid by government entities, it's not our job, it was not Kay's intention, according, again, to her dearest friends that spent many hours talking to her. But as you remember, there were ten different million-dollar bequests that were made. And Councilwoman Horton serves on Haven House. They were one. Edgewood Home was one. Police Department was one. Fire Department was one. The drama department, the high school was one. And off the top of my head, I can't even think of the rest.
Library.
Library was one.
Rescue mission.
Rescue mission was one. And so we'd take a look at these two funds and we'd take a look at globally what her purpose was in taking her and her late husband's considerable ten million dollars worth of assets, wanting to turn them all back to the community. It's the consensus of those that were nearest and dearest to her that we take care of folks that needed to be taken care of in these two funds. But we don't want them to double dip. If they're getting a good, solid temporary total disability, they get a permanent partial disability and so forth, and that's covered by other benefits that these firefighters or police officers have earned, then let's don't let somebody double dip on it. Let's supplement those things or replacement if they don't exist. But let's preserve this money for those that don't have any other avenues.
And I did read that in that master's program, that if you have other viable options, that that obviously comes first before this would take place, which I agree with.
Follow that. I'd entertain a motion in a second to move this to the voting session, June twentieth.
Move.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council review supplemental agreement number one to the aviation project consultant agreement relative to project fifteen dash zero seven five A dash one at the Pomer Bluff Municipal Airport.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, when this project started with MoDOT, the original contract was for design. This is for construction and inspection, which wasn't done back then. I think at the time it came up, I think we probably thought that this may be put on the shelf for a while and it may be years before we'd be able to do it. Well, luckily, we were able to start on it this year. Total fees for these services, six hundred, sixty-five thousand two hundred dollars. Smith and Company's here, if you've got any questions for them or myself. This isn't, I mean, it's not a change order. It's a different contract, so.
That money's already included in the budget, right?
Yes.
Yes, I think it was in the original bid specs and everything, so.
So this is just to prove it for the state?
Yes, sir.
MoDOT Air or whatever it is.
I make a motion. We move this to the voting session on June twentieth.
Second. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action required items, bill number seven nine one three. The city council will take action on Norland's rezoning property from RS three Central Area Residential to M two General Industrial to construct a body shop at twenty-four ninety South Eleventh Street.
Move for first reading and caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance rezoning property located at twenty-four ninety South Eleventh Street from RS three Central Area Residential to M two General Industrial for the purpose of constructing an auto body shop.
Move for second reading and caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Rips?
An ordinance rezoning property located at twenty-four ninety South Eleventh Street from RS three Central Area Residential to M two General Industrial for the purpose of constructing an auto body shop.
Move for adoption, seven nine thirteen, seventy-nine thirteen.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McBay.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarrus.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seven nine one three is adopted. Bill number seven nine one four. The city council will take action on Norland's approving a conditional use permit for caretaker's residence on the ground floor in a CX three central commercial mixed-use district located at four oh eight Vine Street.
Move for first reading and caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Rips?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow a caretaker's residence on the ground floor of four oh eight Vine Street in a CX three central commercial mixed-use district.
Move for second reading and caption only.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Rips?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow a caretaker's residence on the ground floor of four oh eight Vine Street in a CX three central commercial mixed-use district.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McBay.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarrus.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seven nine one four is adopted. Bill number seventy-nine fifteen. The city council will take action on Norland's authorizing the mayor to execute all documents relative to the purchase of property located at nineteen oh two Sunset Drive for the use by the Municipal Utilities Department.
Move for first reading and under caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Rips?
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate located at nineteen oh two Sunset Drive in Pomer Bluff, Missouri.
Move for second reading of bill number seventy-nine fifteen and caption only.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of real estate located at nineteen oh two Sunset Drive in Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-nine one five is passed. Bill number seven nine one six, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the sale of antiquated equipment at the Popper Bluff Street Department.
Move for first reading of seven nine sixteenth on the caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the disposal of obsolete or surplus equipment.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance authorizing the disposal of obsolete or surplus equipment.
Move for adoption of seven nine sixteen.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments?
The only comment I'd make is this, this is a semi truck, right? Why'd we advertise it as a nineteen seventy-four car? It seems like-
That's the brand name.
Is that illegal?
It's a brand name.
Yeah, actually, it's, it's defined on the title as a car truck.
I mean, I thought, I pictured a Grand Marquis or something like that. If you'd advertise it as a semi, it might have brought more bids.
The name of it actually is Auto Car.
Right.
I mean, because it's Auto Car Semi Truck or something like that.
What did Dennis-
Tractor trailer. I, I thought it was a car.
Didn't Dennis think though, that he thought around two thousand, correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, the four thousand is great, so.
I would suspect that the people that are in the business-
Knew what it was.
-what it was when they saw the advertisement.
Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-nine sixteen is passed. Bill number seventy-nine seventeen, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid of PB paving project STP dash five one zero 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 one relative to the South Eleventh and Thomas Streets.
Move for first reading and caption only of seventy-nine seventeen.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
An ordinance accepting a bid for Popper Bluff paving project STP fifty-one hundred zero zero one relative to South Eleventh Street and Thomas Street in Popper Bluff.
Move for second reading and caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance accepting a bid for Popper Bluff paving project STP fifty-one hundred zero zero one relative to South Eleventh Street and Thomas Street in Popper Bluff.
Move for adoption of seventy-nine seventeen.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seven nine one seven is passed. Resolution number eighteen forty-three, the city council will take action on resolution-making appointments to the airport advisory board, downtown Popper Bluff Board, municipal utilities advisory board, tree advisory board, and zoning board of adjustment.
Move for the reading and caption only of resolution one eight four three.
Second.
Motion second for the reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
A resolution of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to the airport advisory board, downtown Popper Bluff Board, municipal utilities advisory board, tree advisory board, and zoning board of adjustment.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution number eighteen forty-three is passed. Resolution number eighteen forty-four, the city council will take action on resolution-making appointments to the animal control advisory board, arts and museum advisory board, fair housing committee, historical preservation commission, housing authority board, library board of trustees, park board, planning and zoning commission, disabilities advisory board, and the Black River Coliseum board of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Move for first reading and caption only.
Second.
Motion second for the reading of resolution eighteen forty-four, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
A resolution of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to the animal control advisory board, arts and museum advisory board, fair housing committee, historical preservation commission, housing authority board, the library board of trustees, park board, planning and zoning commission, and disabilities advisory board, and the Black River Coliseum advisory board of the city of Popper Bluff.
Move for adoption of resolution eighteen forty-four.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
We have six yes votes and one abstention.
Thank you. Resolution number eighteen forty-four passes. Resolution number eighteen forty-five, the city council will take action on resolution-making appointments to the plumbing board, electrical wiring board, building standards board, and the heating and air conditioning board of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Move, move for first reading and caption only.
Second.
Motion second for reading of resolution eighteen forty-five, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson.
A resolution of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to the plumbing board, electrical wiring board, building standards board, and the heating and air conditioning HVACR board to the city of Popper Bluff.
Move to adopt eighteen forty-five resolution.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution number eighteen forty-five is adopted. I think we have all the boards full again this year.
We do.
We had a few years where we had some vacancies and no applicants to fill them.
Very well this year.
So appreciate all the interest. Next time the city council, city Popper Bluff, will meet in a closed meeting, which they will discuss such matters which are exempt under the open's meeting law, section six-ten, point oh-two-one, point one, point two, point three, point nine, point eleven, point twelve, point thirteen, and point fourteen, the revised statutes of Missouri.
I make a motion. We move into closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just two things to report. The Missouri Supreme Court has created a committee to deal with municipal courts. It's a fairly small committee. And Dina Teague, who is our court administrator here at City Hall, has been chosen to serve on that committee. I think that's a big honor for Dina. She's worked here a lot in years and knows municipal court forwards and backwards, so hats off to her. Also, as most of you know, this week the world-famous Clydesdales are here. They came in today around noon. They're here till next Monday. We've got a lot of events scheduled this week. I think we sent you all a schedule of those events. They're actually being housed at the Coliseum, so during the day there are certain times people can take their kids or whoever and go to the Coliseum and walk around the catwalk and view the Clydesdales. But they haven't been here since, I think, two thousand and five, so they're not here very often. And we're glad to have them here.